Well, good evening, everyone. It looks like we're having a bunch of side conversations, so everybody should be in a good mood. But we'll see how that goes. It is time now for the Perry Municipal Authority Meeting for September 16, 2013. It is 6:15. Roll call please.
Stroller.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. This time, I'd like to invite Pastor Brett Nation, if he would, to lead us in our opening invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you for this opportunity that we get to come and discuss your business and to discuss the affairs of the city. We thank you, Lord, that you're going to give us wisdom, that we will listen to you and follow the will of God. Lord, we just pray over our city. We ask that you just bring a blessing on this city. May it glorify you in everything that we do. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Brett. Brett filled in last minute for us. We had a cancellation, so thank you for doing that. This time, we'll move to item number one, the consent agenda. If you want to remove the only item that we have, we'll take that.
Motion approved.
Second. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Tim. We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as presented and unable to be discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we go to item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wishing to make comments on items not on our PMA agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled. Comments from those assembled. Very well, then, we'll move to item number five, proclamations, accommodations, reports, inquiries of the governing body. Seeing none, we'll move into the business section. Item number six, consider approval of resolution 2013-04, providing for the reimbursement of certain funds expended for the authority's land purchase relating to the capital improvements and economic development project. Authority members, you will remember well, I'm sure, that we had several commitments as it related to the bond issue. That was where the majority of the money was going. And one of those commitments were to reimburse the authority for the purchase of the onkey property. And this is the agenda item to do that. Questions or comments?
Move to approve resolution 2013-04.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve resolution 2013-4. Will there be discussion before voting? Seeing none, votes in order. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number seven, new business. Any new business needs to come before the PMA. Seeing none, we'll move to item number eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion, second, to adjourn. On debate, roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. We'll move to item number one. Item number one is the consent agenda. Items wishing to be removed.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will there be discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wishing to make comments on items not on our city council agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled. Corey? No. Comments from those assembled? Very well. Move to item number five, proclamations, accommodations, reports, and inquiries of the governing body.
I think we had a great Cherokee Strip celebration. The parade was nice. The only comment that I have is, I think we need more trash barrels because there was a lot of trash left over at the end of the parade, so.
There was, but the student council came out and took care of that in short order, so we really appreciate them doing that. It's kind of one of their community service projects. But I noticed the same thing that you did, and I'm going, oh, my gosh, I thought maybe we have to go pick up all this stuff. And then it was gone.
Yeah.
You know, they did a great job. But I agree, more trash barrels.
Very well. The only comment, I just want to give a shout out to, because you're too humble to do it, but at the Perry Assembly God Church celebrated their 75th anniversary here in Perry on Sunday, and they invited me out to say a few words, and I appreciate that very much for the wonderful turnout, and it's nice to see churches thriving in the community. So congratulations on your 75th. The other proclamations, accommodations, reports, and inquiries. Seeing none, we'll move to item number six, which is consider proclamation regarding texting and/or emailing while driving. Mary, you want to take that on?
There's an initiative across the state, working with the youth, and so we've approached as to whether or not the city of Perry would like to do a proclamation to try to persuade people to not text and drive. And so this is a proclamation that just kind of goes on record, stating our support for the initiative that's trying to save lives and live for another day. So I don't know if you want me to read this, or do you want to read it, or I can do that.
It's pretty short. Yeah, feel free. If you want to read it, feel free.
Whereas the city of Perry, Oklahoma, holds the health and safety of its residents as a chief concern, whereas through itcanwait.com, text to pledge, tweet to pledge, and events, more than 1.8 million people have committed to never text and drive, whereas 98% of American commuters know that sending a text or email while driving a vehicle is not safe, whereas nearly 50% of the commuters text while being behind the wheel, whereas more than 40% of commuters who text while driving reportedly reported the activity as being a habit, whereas a driver that sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by Charles Hef Hall, the mayor of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, that September 19, 2013, is declared to be no text onboard pledge day in the city of Perry, Oklahoma, and all residents are requested to consider the consequences of texting and emailing while driving.
Mary brought this to me and asked me what I thought. You know what? I got to tell you, I was a little hesitant to bring it because it's a big commitment, people. You know, I'll be the first to admit, I mean, it's a very, very tempting thing. And I don't think I could look any of you in the eye and tell you that I'm not guilty of it. When you spend some time, as I know a lot of you have, of working with 16-year-olds just starting to drive, sometimes a scared straight lesson is not a bad thing to do. And it doesn't take long to search on YouTube for some of these videos and hear these people talk about accidents that they've been involved with, either that they caused or they were a victim of, as related to texting and driving. So, you know, somebody has to take some leadership in this. I think this council certainly is a good group to start it. And I think that the way that this is written is just a commitment by us that we're going to seriously consider what can happen if you make the decision to do this. And so for that matter, that's the reason that it's here in front of you. I think that we should show a message of support and just know, and I can relate to it, I mean, it is darn difficult to, I mean, it's a temptation that really affects all of us. And we ought to keep it on the forefront of our mind. Anytime we get behind the wheel and grab a phone at the same time.
It's illegal, too, right?
No.
Not yet.
No.
Not in Oklahoma.
Not in Oklahoma. Some states. Because we signed, the realtors signed legislation that they're backing this.
Right.
So I thought it already gone through.
With a commercial driver's license.
Yeah, it's not for the public.
But not our drivers.
Well, I think it's in.
There may be laws attempting to be passed.
Yeah, there may be.
They'll be covered.
I think if you're involved in an accident as a result of texting, I know there's something there in that.
You're in a tinnin' drive.
Yeah, tinnin' drive. That's what it could be.
Do we have anything, like even city trucks, city employees talking, texting?
Oh, yeah. I've seen it.
Do we have policies in place about that? Or do we?
There may be, but I've observed it, so.
Yeah. Well, and I'm with our mayor. I'm guilty, guilty, guilty. So my kids remind me all the time.
Well, what would you like to do with it, council? Is this something that we want to proclaim and put it out there?
I move to it.
Paul, second.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, Brett. We have a motion, second, to approve the proclamation. Will there be continued discussion before we move to a vote? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay. We'll move to item number seven, which is a presentation by PDG Inc., the possible design of ballpark facilities and renovation of existing ballpark facilities with cost possibilities. Council members, after our move to create the financing for some possible facility improvements and renovations, Mary sought out this group who comes with a very long history and experience in renovations and new facilities. We have with us this evening Jim Crosby and Jeffrey Evans that have spent some time on our facilities. They came to Perry and toured our facilities, and I think have been asked to come tonight, and you can see a presentation that they prepared in your packets. And so at this time, I'd invite them to the podium, and we'll hear what they had to say.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The mayor said, we came, I think it was week before last, or was it last week?
Couple weeks.
Yeah, two weeks ago, and visited the site. And kind of the first question was, what do you think of our existing facilities, and what do you think it would take to renovate those? And when we happened to be there, the fields were unmoed. It was pretty unkept, and the softball looked really good, the baseball part of the facility was along the weak side. So we had a discussion about, you know, how might we solve that? And then Mary and Bryce and Mayor talked about the other potential site for a new facility that's out along I-35. And so we went and looked at that, and then had a discussion, and kind of talked about possibility. And all this is just possibilities now. I mean, we haven't been, you know, done any extensive studies or anything. We just had a quick trip for an hour or so, and then we've gone back and kind of thrown some numbers, well, I shouldn't say thrown some numbers at. We put some numbers together that are realistic numbers for other projects that we're working on now or in the past recent history, and kind of put together some costs so you guys could kind of see what it takes to do a new facility. But we thought that it might be appropriate to make the existing facility a practice facility. And most of the places where we work, they don't want to do games and practice on the same field. It's just too much wear and tear, and that might be part of the problem of the existing facility that you have now. So, you know, we thought it might be appropriate to make that a practice facility, and by doing that, some of the parts, in particular the lights, could be reused at the softball fields. And one of the coaches, and I forget, that was the high school softball or baseball?
Softball.
Softball coach was there, and he came over and talked to us about some of the problems that they'd had, and that that was a, some kind of a landfill in the past. And so in particular where the baseball fields are, it settles and it gets uneven, and they have to try and level them up every year, and that that has continued to happen. So, you know, no telling if it'll ever stabilize itself. You know, you go put new dirt and regrade it, and then it could still sink and have the same problems. So he, you know, had a couple of concerns on the softball, which lighting was one, and the fixtures that are at the baseball apparently haven't even been used in six or seven years. So, you know, I thought that that would be good to put those to use and use that to upgrade the softball fields as well. Parking was kind of a concern. Obviously, you all probably know, there's a gravel parking lot out there now. It's fairly stable. It's probably been parked on for eons of time, and so it's pretty solid. But we talked about how, you know, whether that's an asphalt overlay or some kind of a chip and seal, but kind of upgrade the parking lot there, make it a little more organized, too, and you could probably park more cars on it if there's striped spaces and everything where it's designated parking. And in turn, probably increase or improve the handicap access there. I mean, that's kind of a big thing nowadays, and get some handicap parking spaces and get them over into the main part of the complex. From there, we went out and looked at the new site. I guess we could kind of get the slides rolling here. It's kind of intro. Next slide. Just a little bit before we get into the site, a little bit about planning and design group, and Mary kind of mentioned, but we've been in business 28 years. Throughout that entire time, we've done some level of sports and parking recreation design. I kind of got into it. So from a baseball standpoint, I mean, I've been through everything that all the coaches have been through. I started coaching my two boys in kindergarten, actually preschool, and I coached all the way through eighth grade with both boys to some degree, head coach at some points and assistant coach at others, until they went on and made the Union baseball team in Tulsa and followed them all through high school career in football and baseball. So I had a big love for the sports deal, and so I started promoting that heavier many, many years ago, because my kids are all grown and out of college now, so it's been a while. But so, you know, I'd been to lots of places, and we played tournaments, so we went all over the region anyway, and played in Kansas and Missouri and Texas and places. So I got to look at a lot of facilities and the good and the bad, and what works and what works economically, and what's, you know, sky's the limit type of projects versus, you know, virtually everybody in Oklahoma, and communities like yourself have a budget and, you know, have to do something realistic. Some of the places you go to in Kansas City or somewhere, it's like, you know, where'd the money come from? It's unlimited on what they do. But so we've got lots of experience. Currently, we're under contract. We've got the grading done for a complex in Salasaw. It's four baseball fields and four softball fields, and then four multipurpose fields that would be in between. So the softball and baseball here with multipurpose in the middle. So that's kind of a unique design. What we did there is we did a master plan for the whole property. We didn't really, we talked about that a little bit, and Bryce kind of mentioned a little bit about, you know, if we look at the new park, we'd want to look at what's the full potential of it, too, not just, you know, what do we need right now for baseball to get by with, you know, and the softball upgrading. So Salasaw, we did a master plan. They went through a kind of a lengthy process there. We helped them select the site. A year or two later, they, well, we did a master plan and helped select the site, and then a couple of years later, they wanted to move forward. They got a sales tax on their ballot, and they hired us before that anticipating that it was going to go through. So we got a head start with some hotel and motel money, and that leads us up to now. They've, under full contract, they passed a $5 million tax, which for Salasaw is pretty amazed, you know, that that's a pretty big thing. But U-Sports is a major there, and their fields were on the high school property, and the high school passed a bond issue, so they were expanding, and those fields were going to go away. So they're in a mad scramble. So we have to have fields ready for them to play in spring of '15. So we're hustling on that. We're also currently getting ready to go out to bid on a big sports project for the city of Oklahoma City, which is soccer and one high school baseball field. Several other sports things. Bentley Park, which Jeff's going to go over with, and kind of show you some pictures that we'd showed the group the first time, and they thought it'd be appropriate to show you guys just something that's current. It's just finishing up now. It's had a punch list, and it's the second phase to a two-phase project, and it's in Bixby. So Jeff's going to go over that. This is just kind of, and this is in your packet, I'm not going to go through this. Mary found us, though, through the city of Cushing, which has been quite a few years since we did that. I haven't even been by in several years, but I have kind of kept up with it and saw that they do a good job of maintaining it. And that was a big thing for Cushing, too, and they couldn't afford to do everything they wanted to do up front. So there, one thing they did was just gravel the parking lot, and then they've since gone back, and I think you've seen it with asphalt, and I have, too. I've been by since they asphalted it, but they did that several years ago. And we set it all up and had it graded where all they had to do was come in and lay out the asphalt, and we had curbs and handicap parking spaces and sidewalks and all that on the downhill side, and then they didn't do curbs on the other sides. But that's how Mary found us. I guess she talked to Steven Spears, which was the city engineer at the time, and now he's the city manager, if I understand correctly. But so we do this all the time. We work with small communities and councils and things like you guys, and help try and get you through the process and, you know, anything we can do to help, aside from just designing the fields and helping you get them constructed. Next slide. So here's the existing facility, kind of already talked about having gone out there. You looked at it, baseball on the left, softball on the right. You can see that the softball looks pretty good. Actually, this picture's this evening, the baseball field's mowed at this point on here in the dirt infield. There's a dirt infield. When we were out there, you couldn't see the infield. It was just overgrown with Bermuda, and we had so much rain this summer that, you know, it just grew like crazy and hadn't been mowed in a while. Parking lot's, you know, fairly well-defined there, so, you know, getting some asphalt on that and the main road, I think, could be a big improvement for softball. And then there's some other things that, you know, Jeff can talk about a few things that, you know, we either heard from the coach or thought that, you know, might be good to do some upgrade there. Next slide. These are just kind of, you know, we've talked about this, but, you know, just so you have it for when we leave, but talked about the lighting. I think there was some talk about maybe improving the irrigation, or that it maybe just had a quick coupler type system there, that, you know, maybe an automatic irrigation system on at least the primary field or two. Grading and drainage is really more for the baseball, but anywhere that, you know, needs to be touched up on the softball as well. And then on baseball, just cleaning up the site, you know, some of the fields are in pretty bad shape, that they'd be better off to not be there than probably be there in the condition they're at. So either upgrade the fence or put the practice facility, maybe eliminate some of the fencing and some of those items, so we don't, you know, go in and rebuild them for practice facility. And Bixby, one thing we did, their old facility was right next to the property that they purchased on the new property, and again, they didn't want practice on the game fields. They have eight baseball and eight softball, so it's a pretty robust. Their baseball went from 500 participants to, I don't know if you remember, Jeff?
Like 1100.
1100 or 1200 in a matter of three or four years. And a lot of the Tulsa teams in that South Tulsa, they had such nice facilities, pulled out of the league that they were in and went to the Bixby league and played. But what we did was we took the old facility, we actually removed all the interior fences, which you guys, you know, have three fields there, so there's fences on each field, but we removed it and put up a new perimeter fence or perhaps a perimeter fence and put some backstops on the perimeter. But they have a soccer complex as well, and so that it could be utilized for practice, and it actually had some old lights, and we left those there for night practice. But they have a really nice practice facility, put up batting cages, and they're used extensively. There's room, you could have, gosh, 10 or 12 teams probably out there practicing at one time. So when you pull into Bentley Park in baseball season, I mean, it's a hustling, bustling thousand cars here, there, and everywhere, from kids in the practice to soccer practice and the detention facility to all over. So I think practice facility is really important to have really nice game fields. Next slide. So this is the new site. We went and visited. I can't remember exactly how the city came about this, but this is property that the city's purchased and owns. Mary, you might refresh my memory if everybody doesn't know where this is, on the cross streets. It's obviously right next to I-35.
I-35, and then Highway 77 is on the north border, it's just south of Sutter's Corner.
Okay. Jeff's got a slide that shows that.
150 acres in that tract, and the seller retained 30 acres, and so the city has 120 on the frontage, and the city has the remaining 120.
Okay. Let's go back one slide. One thing that, you know, and I don't know, there wasn't any big conversation that you guys, like, one of the things Salasaw is doing is they're over by Fort Smith, just, you know, minutes away, and they had seen Bixby, and Bixby has tournaments virtually every week. And I mean, it brings in, it's not the money that the city makes by charging a fee for the fields or anything, but they've had millions of dollars of economic impact. In Bixby, you wouldn't know it if you're familiar with Tulsa, but some of what you'd think was South Tulsa is actually Bixby, where the big movie theaters are and some of the big box stores and Lowe's and things. So their tax base is getting bigger and bigger with big commercial stuff. So there's hotels and everything in town, but, I mean, it's really worked out well that, I mean, they dominate the Tulsa metro area for tournaments. Every week, they've got Lynn Gibson, a great tournament director. It's for-profit. Lynn runs it for-profit. It's not run by the city, and then she pays the city so much per game to play on their fields. So it works out good for the city because it brings in teams from all over the state and the country. They've had World Series where there's teams from, I don't know how many states, they probably said, 10 or 12 states. So you guys haven't really mentioned tournament, but if there was ever a site that was perfect for a tournament facility, you guys have it, you know, right on I-35, Kansas, Oklahoma City, Stillwater, you know, everything that could funnel in there with the exit right at the highway. This slide kind of shows, they took us up to the north there, so up to the north, one mile away. You've got two new hotels and existing ones, so three hotels. You take a right back into town, you've got all the fast food and everything that you'd need to support a tournament. So it's really a great site, whether, you know, that's a factor or not, it's a good site for, you know, having just your new fields as well, easy access. The other fields are close enough in town where, you know, good for practice again. Next slide. We kind of looked at the slide, and the first place that the city, or you guys were shown to us that was a possible site was over along I-35, which at first I thought, well, that's good, because it's real visible from the highway. You can, you know, see the lights, you can have a sign, and it's got a lot of visibility and everything. But then as we got over there, you know, none of the sites steep like you'd think of as a steep site, but we've been involved in too many complexes where you go out and you look at it and go, oh, that's, you know, not too steep, it's not bad. But, you know, I would venture to guess that it had a 6% or 7% slope, which again, is not a big slope, but when you're going to grade a baseball field to 1.5%, that's a lot of feet when you go across 400 or 500 feet, and it's what happened to us in Salasaw. It looked just like that, and they'd already bought the property, and we have 10-foot cuts the property. And we have ten foot cuts on one end and close to ten foot fills on the other. And we've done that before, Arrowhead and Broken Arrow same way. And the fields turned out nice and they're fine and you have an neat embankment and everything, but you know much more economical to build it on flat ground. So then we came around to the west side and it you know just visually and we don't have any topo or anything, but looked perfect. It kind of crowned and you want to have you know your middle area high and everything drain away. You don't want any of the fields, we don't ever grade where the fields on the north grade across the spectator area and then across the fields on the south. We crown it in the middle, grade everything away. And then almost every fourplex we do, if you're a center field or you're at the exact same elevation in center field that you'd be on any one of the four fields, home plates are all the same. And it just everything drain grades and drains well that way. And there's you know rarely any problems on drainage or anything, which is a big thing with baseball, obviously, and trying to get on it, softball as well, or any sports, to get on it as quick as you can after it rains. So I'm going to let Jeff kind of go through some numbers he put together, some numbers. I don't know if you guys can read them, but they're probably in your packet. And then he's going to go through some pictures of Bixby, just stuff that we showed the other people last week. Thank you.
As he said, my name's Jeff Evans. I don't have quite the history that he does in sports fields, but I have about thirty years in it personally playing with kids, coaching, coaching even not my own kids. So I have a lot of history in sports, baseball, football, basketball, golf, tennis, everything. As Jim said, I'm going to kind of go through the the cost analysis with you. The numbers that you see on that page relate to recent projects that we've completed or are in the bidding phase or design phase now that we've gotten actual costs from contractors. So they're they're pretty realistic numbers, but as it states in there, they can change based on inflation, based on where the people are that are coming to to construct the project. So there can be changes to any of these numbers. And that's why there's also a design contingency in there. I know you can't see it up there, but each of you have it in front of you and I can provide larger copies of that, too. I think Bryce actually has some some larger copies of this that I've provided him. But this this includes basically everything that you would need to complete the project. We've pulled a few numbers out into alternates to keep the upfront costs a little bit lower, just so you can see how this would work. Right now, this is designed or preliminarily laid out with two high school fields and two twelve and underfields. Obviously, you can cut some costs by decreasing the size of the fields. You can decrease the cost by only lighting one of each of the size of the fields and coming back and putting the infrastructure in to light the other two, but not lighting them up front to save a little bit of cost. There are some amenities that you'll see in some of the pictures to follow that that we've moved down into the alternate column that are some great amenities to these fields. So I'm going to go ahead and go on to the next slide where I'm going to show you some of the amenities. This slide here is is just a typical field. As Jim said, really, if you look at this and you're in the center there where the white sign is on the backstop and the blue shade structures, all that's going to be at the same elevation. It's all going to drain out and around the site. So whoever's playing center field is going to be at the same elevation on any field. This one here is a baseball field. Most of these are going to come from Bixby at Bentley Park because this is one of our most recent ones. So it's probably got the best pictures because it is the newest facility that we've done. Next slide is going to show a softball field. So again, the difference between the two really is the the skinned infield versus the the grass infield. You can do the the fields either way. You can play baseball on a skinned infield. You can do it on a grass infield. Softball is typically always played on a skinned infield. So if you wanted these fields to be utilized for either type of sport, you can do the fields skinned. You can still play Little League baseball, whatever you want on them. Plus, you can utilize them for softball games, too. Go ahead and go to the next slide on that one. Kind of in the plaza area, some of the amenities that you can get, if all the funding's there, you can see the wraparound shade structures around the spectator area. These not only provide shade for the spectators, but they also provide protection of foul balls and everything because they cover the entire spectator area. Next slide. Concession building, as you can see, it's all block construction, still beams out on the front and everything. So it's it's low maintenance. It's cost effective for maintenance on everything as far as cleaning, longevity of the building. We do these with comp roofs or or metal roofs. This one here is a comp roof. If you if the funds allow, you can do a metal roof and that lasts that much longer. You can see the hollow metal doors for the shutters on the concession areas. You can lock this up and it's vandal resistant, not vandal proof, nothing is vandal proof. But we try to make our structures as vandal resistant as possible. We do work with architects to design these, but as Jim said, we've got so much experience in some of this stuff that we know what works and what doesn't. And so we actually kind of have an architect on our team that we work with on a regular basis that we work back and forth to tell each other what works best. You can go on to the next slide. You can see on the backside of the concession, same building. This will be your restroom areas, men's and women's on the backside with a mechanical room between the houses on your electrical items, hot water tank, different things like that for the restrooms. All the restrooms inside are built with block construction, too. Partition walls, block construction with metal partitions. That way you can wash these out. We provide a hose bib in our designs so that when you're inside of these, you can just hook up a hose bib, spray it down with chemicals if you want, whatever, wash the whole thing out. It's got a floor drain, so it all just drains out. So again, the ease of maintenance, low cost and and heavy duty construction for again vandal resistant. We go on to the next one. A little back out area of the whole plaza area. This is the softball complex at Bentley. The user groups, excuse me, has provided signage up on the building. This one, we did the red, Bixby's colors are red and blue to designate. We did blue for baseball, red for softball. So all the softball fields have red structures, all the baseball have the blue ones. You again, you can see how it creates the whole central corridor area there, covered over the bleachers for the spectators. And this provides a nice area for people to hang out between games and and to have that larger space and you're not crammed in there against the people on the next field over. And all concrete. So it's all ADA accessible also from the parking lot to everywhere on the site. Next slide. This is between the two spectator bleacher areas, right behind the backstop. We a lot of umpires don't like bleachers right behind the backstop because then he gets messed with all the time here, she does. And so we like to provide the the bleachers on the side. And then this one with the pedestal that you see there, the little concrete pedestal has plug-ins for scoreboards so that the scorer could sit there if there's a scoreboard on the field. They designed those hardwired or wireless, but it would have a reset there to plug the controller in even if it was wireless. So you don't have to keep it charged all the time. And that allows people to bring in lawn chairs, as you saw in some of the previous pictures, just to hang out there and not be on the bleachers. Next slide. Here was looking back the other direction. We just kind of wanted to show the heavy duty construction of the fence. We've also learned to upgrade your your materials on site. This one's showing that all the backstops are welded together. So all the posts and braces are welded. It's got a higher gauge fence fabric so that we're not letting the balls dent the fence all the time. This has actually been in place for about four or five years now. And I was actually just on site last week. I don't think there's still a dent on the backstop, and that's amazing. But the one thing that they do is you have to make sure that you're not practicing on the field, you're not doing soft toss on the field, you're not doing things that are going to directly damage the fields. Go on to the next slide. Dugouts, we even provide shade fabric over the top of the dugouts. So even the players get some shade. This one here, you can see sometimes the sun angle isn't friendly to you regardless depending on what dugout you're in. So again, the heavy duty fence fabric. And again, that provides protection, too, from foul balls in the dugout so that balls aren't raining down on the kids. Go on to the next one. That's the backside of it. I think that's the last slide. So we just want to kind of show you some of the things that that come with that cost. You know, the the shade, the wraparound shade structures have been pulled out. It's a big item. And like I said, some of the lighting, we have the asphalt for the parking lot pulled down into an alternate, but in in the top numbers, we we did look at doing exactly what we did in Cushing, some carbon gutter, getting the ag base down there, all the all the islands and stuff constructed so that we would have the the structure there. We come back in and do the asphalt or if if the city has their own in-house people or county that can come in and do those types of things. Some of the communities we work with will do some of those things. So that's pretty much our presentation. The cost, Jim didn't get much into it, but the cost on the the existing facility, we didn't get in real depth about that because you can really throw as much or as little as you want at a at a project like that. So if you just want to go in and do cleanup, you might be able to do that in-house. If you wanted to do new fences, you might want to bring somebody in grading and drainage, whether you have the manpower and the supplies to do that in-house or not. So that number can be as little or as big as you want it to be to get the items you want to accomplish. So are there any questions from you?
Let me just answer a couple of things on the on the budget Jeff didn't mention, but the biggest unknown, we don't know here is utilities. We talked about it and we know a little bit. There was electric lines going down the west boundary. We know the water line is up on Highway 77 about midway in the property, but we haven't done any kind of a real cost of how much does it cost to get there? And if we bring the water line, do we have to bring a six inch water line that would serve you know fire hydrant? Or can we just bring a service line? You know, is the electric on the west three phase and plenty you know adequate for that? So Jeff had kind of put in a placeholder number of $200,000 there. Hopefully, that's a high number in that that you know can be done cheaper. The other thing, grading was kind of a just a educated number from past projects. But all the rest of those numbers on there, if you bid this tomorrow, we we believe that you'd have virtually a hundred percent of that contingency for the project. You know, we always put the contingency in there at this stage because there might be something we don't know about. But all those numbers on concrete and everything, you know, whether it's Perry, Salasaw, or Oklahoma City, we hedge those numbers enough that we we historically are going to get most of the alternates that we have. Now, in your case, there's some big alternates down there. We usually don't have that many big alternates, but wraparound shade structures or something, there's usually you know our base bid's going to come in where we're going to be able to take some of those alternates. So this is a very conservative estimate. You you could build that today for that money. I'm confident that $200,000 I'm sure would be adequate unless there was something about that power in particular that didn't have three phase because we need that for the lines.
Let me, I hope we can encourage a bunch of questions while you guys are here, but I want to set out just a couple of things that may be obvious to some or may not be obvious to some. The first thing is is that there is currently no timetable for any of these improvements that we're talking about. We're just in conceptual phase. And so nobody's set a time, you know, a time period. You know, so none of that has been done. There's been a lot of discussion about do we use our current fields? Do we build a new field? Where would the field be located? What do we do with the softball facilities or the improvements that need to be made there, that sort of thing? And so we're in that zone now of of trying to start the framework of developing a plan of action. So no plan of action has been set, no timetable has been set. The other thing that I wanted to point out, in case you're wondering, is PDG has not been hired by the city of Perry. We are not under contract with them. What they've done for us is tonight, on their own on their own time, have come down here to evaluate our facilities and and make kind of a general presentation, which if you've sat in these council meetings before, they're pitching to get the job. Okay? They would like very much to get the engineering and design job for anything that we would do. And this is an opportunity for us to get acquainted with them. But we are not under contract. We have not expended any money as it relates to anything that you've seen here tonight. So I just wanted to set those things out before we go into the question phase. So Betty, you look like you were ready to ask a few questions.
Does this cost include the parking area?
It would include the the grading and and the subgrade and some carbon gutter. So it would be your parking lot minus the asphalt, which it's in an alternate number. It'd be the same thing that was originally installed in Cushing.
Okay. And how much do you think that would be?
It it's actually listed at the bottom down in the and I I don't have one in front of me to tell you.
They've got.
It's got about another $135,000.
Okay. Okay. And what do you think the upkeep on a property like this would be annually? Keep it up?
I have some maintenance costs back at the office. Instead of telling you a a number that's unrealistic, I'd like to get those and send them to you because I just recently went through this practice for the city of Salasaw because they asked the same question. And we've done with the people that maintain Bixby. So I have a per quad number that tells for fertilizer, for water, for mowing, the whole whole gamut of maintenance on the facility per year.
One thing, you know, we didn't get into detail on all the line items. Lighting, for instance, is $0 for 25 years with the system that's proposed on there. It's called Musco's Green System. And it's monitored through Lincoln, Nebraska. They're going to know when you have a lamp out before you guys even realize it. If a ballast is out, a fuse is out or anything, it shows up on their computer. And so the upfront cost that you pay that's included in there includes that 25-year maintenance program because they're actually going to come out midway and relamp the whole thing, even if you have eighty percent of your.
After the life cycle of the.
Oh, yeah. They're going to replace any lamps that go out during the the 25 years. And at the end of 5,000 hours or 25 years, even if you had eighty percent of your lamps or ninety percent of your lamps lit, they're going to come out and replace every single one of them. So it's going to be again, they're going to walk away at 25 years and it's going to be just like a new system at that point as well. So that's a a big thing. You have to pay for electricity, obviously. All these fields are fully irrigated with a state-of-the-art irrigation system, automatic controller, dust control on the infield. So I mean, these are are, I wouldn't call them Mercedes, but these are you know upper end fields. I mean, you know, they're they're built for low maintenance with the irrigation system, the type of turf we plant. I mean, we're currently typically using Patriot. It's going to need to be mowed less. I mean, it doesn't grow as tall. If you want it to look really nice, you mow it just as frequently, but you're only cutting off a little bit because it grows a lot slower. Everything's concrete on the inside. Little details that we didn't look at, but like the concrete on the spectator area comes out six inches beyond the backstops and everything. So you don't have all the grass and stuff growing up in between the backstop like you see so many times. And you can just run a weed eater down that edge. And like Jeff went over on the buildings, they're extremely low maintenance because they're just concrete block. We don't encourage you to paint them at all. It's a colored block, so there's no paint bulb on the outside. Any questions?
Explain this light thing again. If we have a bulk go out, someone's going to come out and replace it?
They're going to come out and replace it. Hopefully, before you'd even call them and say, we have a lamp out on field number four, they're going to send you an email that says, you have a lamp out on field four. Our crew will be in your area in two weeks or one week or 10 days and we'll get that replaced.
So they have a crew that just travels?
Well, they hire local contractors. Are are licensed to do work for them.
I see.
And so you might have an electrician in Enid or Stillwater or somewhere, or maybe even here in Perry that is licensed to do work for Musco. And they'll call them up and say, hey, we got a light out on this field. We're going to send you the equipment if you don't have it in stock already and you need to go out and get this done.
Yeah, this this won't be lighting like you have on the softball fields with the wooden poles and the lights. And I'm not saying that's that's not a good lighting system or anything, but wooden poles, which we've used in the past, they're going to eventually twist. They're no matter what you do, they're going to twist and turn. Then you got to go out and re-aim everything. Musco's systems all pre-aimed. If you know something did happen, there's a you know light tornado that didn't tear everything up, but it twisted everything. It's got aiming brackets on top. They would, I don't know if that's covered under the system, if it's something like that. But it has, you just you can turn the fixture and there's two things and you line them up and it's aimed on the field.
It's pretty cool when they first install these. I mean, I've seen them done on tennis courts and basketball courts and and baseball fields and football fields, soccer fields even. When they put these in, they use a giant crane or a big truck that they can hook brackets on and grab these poles. And some of these poles 50, 60 foot tall. They already have the fixtures on them. And so when they set these on the concrete base that's there, they actually leave them up just high enough that they can rotate them. And they have a pre-mounted laser on it that's got a battery life that's, I guess, really small. And they go out and they set a an aiming point in the middle of field that's been predetermined by the design. And they will rotate this until it lines up with the two lasers. And then they know they're in position and then they drop it all the way down on the concrete base.
Your gears are all, it's first class gears. And then they'll put a remote switch in the concession stand so you could either operate them by walking out to where the gearbox is and flipping it, deal like you know more of a traditional deal or and then but they'll run remote switches over to the concession stand where you just push a button and then they come on. And then we always have them install a security light down low or that's not a sports light that shines on the sidewalk out to the parking lot. So when you turn the lights off, that light stays on for 30 minutes or whatever you want to set it for. So people that are standing around talking and stuff before they leave aren't in the dark and it lights up the exitway to the parking lot. These clusters showing are for four fields, correct?
There there should be two fields lit up in the top and two two down in the alternate, if I'm not mistaken.
And even if we went that route, obviously, it'd be nice to light all four of them. But if you had to go that route, the pole bases, the common pole bases would be in. So some of the poles would have lamps that went both directions. So that pole would be sized and it'd have be pre-drilled for the bracket for the other side. And so that pole would be virtually ready to go. And the other ones, we've done it both ways. You got to run conduit at least out from under your concrete and stuff. And we normally run conduit all the way so it's ready to go. We have had problems where you ran conduit and then three or four years later, you decide to upgrade the lights and you can't find the conduits and stuff. So we want to do a good job of making sure those were marked in a you know a can down below grade where we could find those.
And one other thing that that raises the cost of that lighting on this one is two high school fields. If you're lighting one high school field, it's it's I don't remember the exact number, but I believe it's 225,000 that's in there, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, that's a that's a huge number just to light a field. And a lot of that has to do with the the number of poles that go on a high school field versus the smaller field.
Six poles versus four poles.
Yeah. So.
Let me clarify, too, a couple of things about these field sizes. And again, we're just in the planning state. We're just talking. And in fact, there's several in the audience that were part of some original discussions that we had months ago about what to do to our fields. But just a couple of things, just want to touch on a couple of comments you made. You made a comment related to the infield being all dirt and where you could play pee-weed ball or you could play softball there. And I don't want the, I don't want anybody to get confused. Currently, you know, under the direction that we're thinking, you know, there would be currently, there's no softball being designed to be played on any new facility that we build. I think that softball facilities that we have are are good. They need some. They need some, they need some improvements, and there could be dollars available through this process where the city would help to, you know, to, to help those fields be even better than they are today. Specifically, the parking has been a concern, and some lighting and some irrigation. And so, nobody yet, anyway, has come up with this notion of, well, let's relocate the softball fields. That, I don't think that that's been talked about.
We're not suggesting that.
It's not, it's not intent. And so, by that, I believe that any new facility we build more than likely would be, you know, designed with grass infields. Additionally, we talked about, a lot about size, and I just want to make this point. You all correct me in case, it was real hot that day, and we were a little hotter, and I was a little lightheaded. But when you talk about the, the two high school-sized fields that were there, one thing, you know, we have a good high school field, and nobody is talking about moving away from that high school field either. The discussion centered around that you can play Pee-wee ball on a larger field, but you can't play certain Pee-wee balls on a smaller field. And so, I think that as we go forward, we just ought to talk about the fields will be of size to meet the needs of the community that are not too small, as opposed to you hitting into your head that we're going to put, you know, two high school fields out there. It's more related to size than it is people actually using the facility. So, I wanted to, wanted to clear that up just a little bit. You know, there's a lot of talk about being able to make a field large enough that if you had a 14 and under tournament, but you were on a larger field, you could, you could put in some temporary fencing and make that field smaller, but you, it's difficult to make that field bigger. So, I just wanted to clear up that point a little bit. You know, I don't, if you start saying high school fields, the public might get the idea that we're looking to move the high school field somewhere else, and I, I don't think that's the intent. So, keep in mind that we're talking about size. And, and again, if you, if you'd have a couple of 14, 14 and under fields, larger fields, you could still do a 12 and under event there, a 10 and under event there, but you would, you would, through temporary fencing, use the same infield, but the outfield fences would change in their distance. So, I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. It could get confusing.
Just comment on that. I mean, as Mayor said, it was real hot out there. I kind of got a little bit lost with the high school coach talking about that because that's not typical to a, a youth sports project to have two high school-sized fields. That, that was not necessarily our recommendation. It's not a bad recommendation, it's just a more expensive way to go. A 14-year-old field, you're going to drop down to that four-pole layout, you're going to have less fence, less irrigation, less sod, less everything. And, you know, and, and things are different now, my kids are older, but we always played on a 14-year-old field until we got to eighth grade, and then, and ninth grade, they started playing on a full deal. And we'd go to some tournaments as 14-year-olds and play on a full high school field, but we never played league play on that at all. But I was getting a little bit confused on the way he explained how the youth sports worked here was a little confusing to me because he said, "A younger age starts picking up on high school opposed to just ninth grade." So...
Well, and I think, you know, this is again, part of the planning process. What we will want to do, you know, is really talk with these, with these coaches and sponsors that are involved in the Pee-wee programs and really get a feel for what the needs are, and we haven't completely nailed that down yet. There is some confusion on the different associations that are played in, in this particular area versus, you know, in, in a bigger city, or possibly what the goals are for the high school coach to want his ninth graders to be, you know, playing on the distance of the pitching mound and all that stuff. There's people in this room that could speak to that a lot better than I, I can. But in general, there's a lot of discussion that will need to take place with the, with the sponsors and coaches here locally as it relates to what their needs are. And we're not sitting here saying we know what that is, you know, so there's a lot of discussion that needs to be taken place.
Yeah, because we could set up 14-year-old fields, which we do the maximum 14-year-old field before you cross the point of going to a four-pole, from a four-pole to a six-pole layout. And, and those fields are going to be, for eighth graders, are going to be more than, more than adequate because you don't want to take a home run away from a seventh or eighth grader. I mean, they need to be able to hit their home runs too. But you could set up the infield where you could still pitch from a full 60 and play 90-foot bases. You could have the infield set up where you had two sets of sleeves, one that had full 90-foot bases, and then one that had 54, 56, or whatever, you know, one notch down, and then have a mound that was big enough. It'd look a little oversized, but where you could pitch from 60 or, I said, on the bases would be 80 something, but pitch from 54, 56.
Other questions?
Well, I have a couple of comments. One, I've been to the Bigsby field. My daughter travels. It's awesome. It's a, it's a great facility. And so, and all these pictures, I've been on that field, and it looks great. And the shade is awesome too. I mean, that, that's something that could be added later, obviously, because of that cost, but it is very nice for that.
Well, we don't want to spoil any locals.
Yeah, yeah.
Right off the bat.
But I do usually bring a lawn chair so I can get a little closer to the empire. One of the, just speaking to the needs and kind of tailoring off what our mayor just said, the high school fields, you know, especially even for tournament play, the older the kids get, the smaller the teams get as far as 16 and 18 and unders coming and playing.
That happens in every community.
Yeah, yeah.
In any sport.
Well, yeah, even in general. We did state for softball this year, the amount of teams that were in 14 and under and 16 and under. Matter of fact, a lot of 18 and unders usually just gel with the 16 and unders in a lot of tournaments. And so, one thing that, just seeing the needs is 8 and under is a huge program here. And like you said, not taking, we've played in some fields outside of Perry when we do go play. We, we went and played in one facility where we were playing on an adult-size softball field, and the kids would hit it, and if it got past your outfielder, it was just, the kid's just running forever trying to get the ball. And that makes it very difficult to do, but, you know, being able to adjust those fields. But 8 and under is, is, as far as for local Perry, it is our, Jeff could probably tell me, it's our highest amount of kids that are involved in being, Jeff has ran the system here for a while, so...
Man, the problem with going and saying having a 12-year-old field but playing eight-year-olds, that's pretty extreme because it's hard to build your infield to accommodate, you know, the eight-year-olds because the base paths and everything are so small that your dirt, dirt infield, now, the whole thing was a dirt infield like Jeff was saying, and I don't think he was implying softball there, but some smaller communities play on skinned infield because it's easier to maintain. You can go just spin out the whole field opposed to the grass and the ruts and everything that you get with the base paths. But you can solve the distance deal, and I think we talked about, and you can get a really, really nice first-class set of portable fences. They're expensive. They're like 20-some thousand dollars. Mustang has them, but they're real chain link with a T on the bottom opposed to just putting up some orange fence with T-posts or something.
And those are easy and shiny.
Okay, and they're, they move really quick, you know, in a matter of 30 minutes or so, you could probably move them off the field or on the field. So, you can solve your distance thing there. And you, not to say you can't solve your infield problem, but that's a harder deal because if you have a base path that's way up here for whatever, I can't remember what an eight-year-old would be, but probably, you know, 40-something feet or something versus the 90...
16 and 7.
60 is the shortest base path.
60 foot and 7.
Okay, 60. Well, that, that's for eight-year-olds, so, wow. Because I know that, you know, but 60 to 90 is a big spread. 60 to 80 something for the 12-year-olds wouldn't be so bad.
Well, we currently use our 8 and under and 10 and under use the same field, and we have two bases to set up for them, and, and so, that, that really works out. We get 12 and under, you know, the pitching mound and all that. Of course, 12 and under is where we play, where we look to the limp park down by the softball fields.
And you lose some versatility, but if it's a perfect world, you'd have a field that's really small, like a Hilti complex in Tulsa. We did them all the way down to four 10-year-olds anyway, and they were like only 160 foot to the fences and 60-foot bases or whatever that small deal was, but you're pretty well, that's it. You can play 10 and under, and that's all. So, like Mayor was saying, you've, you know, you guys got to decide if you want to build in the versatility so that you can have the tournaments. If it's just league play, you could probably do one 10 and under, one 12 and under, one 14 and under, and one high school-sized field. You've kind of covered the whole gamut there.
Well, one last thing. The field's a bit mowed. It's a lot better.
Jeff, Terry, you all have been talking about this for some time. You have any comments, or are you just, just listening tonight?
Just listening right now. I think we need more of the 10 and 12 to get more tournaments in here. We went to a lot of them the last couple of years, and that seems to be where the most of them are.
That's right. Like Jeff said, and like you guys know, I mean, the older you get and the faster the pitching, and the more competitive those kids that aren't cut out for baseball drop out. It's fun when it's T-ball coach pitch and stuff, but that first year of kid pitch is what separates them.
Any other questions? Well, let me just say that this is a, a typical political thing that we roll out to create discussion amongst the community. And so, we'll see how well we did. I think that periodically we'll, you know, have, have agenda items that, that keep us in these discussions, and I think in the meantime, Mary and her staff will be working with, with the locals and the coaches and the league, league guys to kind of define what the needs are, bring in the softball folks, and get some discussion about what, what happens to the old fields too. So, just, this was just an agenda item for general discussion and to get to know the guys from, from PDG. Anything else on, on this topic before we move on? Well, I think we spent enough time on this problem. Anything else by anybody? Guys, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, we'll move to item number eight and hit the city manager's board.
I know there's probably been some questions. I haven't heard about Vance's new dealership project in a while, but last week, we received a preliminary site plan from Vance. It's not their official site plan, but it does give us a, kind of an idea of what they have planned for their location so that we can start looking at utilities and roads and all of that to serve that, that development. We are, we'll be working soon on the bid documents for these roads and, and the access frontage road that will serve that development. Still don't have approval from the Federal Highway Administration for the southbound access road, but we're continuing to follow up on that.
Do they have a deadline, Vance? Does they need to be in, in the building?
From GM, you mean? I'm not aware. I mean, there were deadlines, but those have passed.
And they met those deadlines.
And they met the deadlines, so... The, another piece of good news, we hired a new library director, Pam Rig. She was originally from the Kansas City area, now lives in the Phoenix area with her husband and a nine-year-old son, and her start date is projected for mid-October. And I understand she's already have, has a contract on a house, so that's pretty, pretty positive. She's very excited. Councilman Ret Nation helped us interview. I think we all felt like she was head and shoulders above the others. And she has, for education, master's of library science. She has several years of experience in different venues. There was a small branch library in the Kansas City area where she worked. She's currently working in, on the academic side for a community college. She's excited about being able to come back to a smaller community, raise a family, and be closer to the, to the citizens. And when she heard about trick-or-treat around the square, she just thought that was the best thing ever, so she's excited about that. She has a great personality. I think she'll really fit in well with the community and with the existing staff, and I'll be really glad to, to get her here. But the existing staff, library staff, they're doing a great job keeping things together, and they're learning a lot throughout this process. When you don't have a director, they're having to step up and learn some things, fill out some reports, state aid reports that they might not have ever had the opportunity to do. So, this is a good learning experience for them as well. On the high grass front, we've been working a lot of those complaints. Fortunately, a lot of the property owners comply readily, and, and we don't have to go through the whole process, but, and, and some who have mowed, they need to mow again. Imagine that. Anyway, we're working on dilapidated structures. I think Jason said he has, next week has an hearing on four dilapidated structures, so we're working, beginning to work on those. I think that it might be helpful if we have an agenda item that kind of works through, works our way through the process so that we're all kind of have an understanding of how that process works and why you have to do the things you do. And a lot of it has to do with due process. Property owners do have a right, you know, they do have property rights, but, but they do also have some responsibilities as well. And so, so a presentation to this council would be informational, not only for those of us around the horseshoe, but also for the residents so they have an understanding of what our goals are. And, and that applies also to junk vehicles, trash, you know, all the appliances that sit out around the house, and sofas on the front porch and that sort of thing. So, anyway, that'll be a future agenda item. I don't know exactly when that will occur, but somewhere down the road. This week is the Oklahoma Municipal League Conference. It'll be in Tulsa this year, and the mayor will be attending as well as several staff members, including myself. And it's really a good opportunity to attend educational sessions on things that are relevant. They have concurrent sessions, and usually, there's about six or seven different topics, and sometimes it's hard to, sometimes it's not. But depending on the things that we're wanting to learn more about. And also, networking with our peers gives a really good opportunity to talk with others. And a lot of times, we come back home thinking, "Well, we don't have it so bad after all." So, and then also, they have an exhibit hall full of vendors that are always wanting to talk with you, and I think the, the folks from PDG are probably going to be there, and they'll be, you know, have a vendor booth as well. So, really get to talk with people without having to, you know, make a commitment and pick up a lot of good information from the booth. I too was pleased with the celebration this weekend, and I try to think of if there's any, any city department that doesn't have a part to play in getting ready for the celebration. I think every, I think there's pretty much every city department, and a lot of times we're, you know, kind of in the back, in the back, you know, kind of taking care of things and, and maybe not out in the forefront. And so, I want to make sure that our city folks get, get some due credit for the things that they do and take care of and, and getting things ready. I did talk last week with the Lions Club, made a presentation to them, and today I spoke to the Rotary Club, and lots of interest. And one of the things that I didn't put on my list here is the, the signal at Sixth and Fur. I'm sure everybody's wondering, are we ever going to get that signal put back in? Unfortunately...
I think we're just grown so used to it.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, it's kind of gotten, you know, the Cow Creek Bridge, opening it back up, you know, our traffic patterns are now back to using Highway 64 at First Street. But anyway, no federal or state funding was available. We're going to go back with essentially what was there before, but we do have to purchase new equipment and new poles and all that, and we're trying to get as much as we can out of the insurance companies so that we can hopefully get most of that paid for. So, that'll be a fall project. And with that...
Questions for Mary. How's the road coming out at the industrial park?
Matt, you want to talk about that? The road at the industrial park?
Yeah, the, Three S has been out there. They, they originally got it all graded off and somewhat packed up and compacted, and then we went over the plans and showed them that they needed to build it back up. And so, we've got the, surveyors came back up, gave the proper grade, and they, they've been working on that. They've got the drainage pipes installed for the cul-de-sac area. They're still waiting on some of them. I think it was two more drain pipes to be, to be delivered and waiting on AT&T to drop some fiber optic that runs north and south there on 35th Street before we can put the drain pipes across, under the road and then cross, under the industrial road, and then also cross in across 35th Street. And then they have to build a, a drainage ditch to get it to the natural flow on the other side of the, that field across the street. side of the, that field across the street. But they should be getting close to getting it level and then bringing in the stabilization line or dehydrated line to stabilize that in. And then after that, it's just applying rock and packing it down.
Other questions or comments for the city manager? Okay, Mary, thank you for the report. We'll move to item number nine then, which is the chief financial officer's report. We have Meredith with us today. Meredith, welcome.
Hi, guys. So, I think this is my third meeting in a row. Russ is still alive, I promise.
You might tell them what happened to Russ. I don't know that anybody, everybody knows.
Russ, Russ went out on the lake on Labor Day and had a little accident and ended up having some emergency back surgery on Tuesday morning. So, he's kind of been out of commission. I guess it was, it's an old football injury. Yeah.
But this time he literally broke his back.
Yes. Yes.
Can't play with the kids no more again.
He makes easy, yeah. Anyway, so hopefully, hopefully you all will see him, not the next meeting, but the following meeting. And it's gone a little bit slower than expected because he, of course, pushed it too hard the first week, so. I know, I know you're surprised. All right. Financials as of August, what we've got here. Total cash of the city, $5.8 million. Of that, 3.4% is unrestricted. The 2.4% is restricted cash. We're down about $45,000 from where we were last month. And the purchase of the On-Q property, $250,000 outflow for the On-Q property, offset by some FAA grant reimbursement. And Matt's been working on that. That final bit of money came in and so that's what's reflected in August. Leaves us with a change of $45,000 decrease compared to last month. When we look at the general fund, budget to actual, 16%, that's our benchmark. Specifically, sales tax, you'll see sales tax were at 20% of budget. We're trending high compared to last year. Rounded about $48,000 perma last fiscal year. This year, we're looking at about $54,000 trending. So, so a use tax is also up. That's not one that we can predict as well, but use taxes up, we're at 22% of budget on that. You'll see general government expenses were right at 15%. As you kind of look through these budget to actual percentages, a couple of things will pop out to you. Parks and Rec's revenue at 95% of budget, that's our swimming pool money. And that's the, that's the main contributing factor there. It's the seasonality of the swimming pool. Other items, tax collections in the economic development, hotel motel tax, you'll see that's at 40% of budget. Just to kind of give you a comparison, last fiscal year, in August, we brought in about $18,000 for hotel motel tax. And in August of this year, we brought in $38,000. Significant change there. And you'll also see the economic development expenses already over budgeted $111,000. That's the On-Q property. That's where that expense is sitting at, $250,000 perma. Other than that, everything else is trending pretty close to where we would like for it to. That leaves us with a net loss of $239,000, almost $240,000. I just told you that this financial reflects the $250,000 for the On-Q property. So, other than that, we're at a breakeven position, trending quite where we would like to be on budget. Questions on agenda? Okay. I'm hoping to municipal authority, or do you want me to stop, or do you? I'll be quiet now. You have to. Perry Municipal Authority. Total operating income for the first two months of the year is $728,000. You all know, I tell you, or I'm sure Russ tells you every time, this is their time to get our electric revenues and this is when we need to see that trend high. We earned $680,000 off the first two months of electric revenues. August was a higher billing month than July and when we look back at last fiscal year, we're trending a little bit higher, but not a lot higher. So, and pretty much on track with what we were last year. You'll see water operating income, a loss of $22,000. $40,000 of that was a semi-annual OWRB payment. You all know that we budget for those. They come out in August and February, so that's, that's the reason that looks like a loss there. We budget for it, it just came out in this month.
And what's that payment for?
The, our OWRB, that's our water line from 1997.
Oh, okay.
1997, I believe. Administration revenue looks a little low. It's because people are actually paying on time, which is nice. The main piece of that administration revenue is our penalty income. So, there's a couple of other small things in there, but that's trending a little bit low right now. It's fine. Transfer out $408,000 over to the general fund, which helped created it, a breakeven situation over there. Leaves us with a net income of $367,000. Strong when compared to budget, but we know, we expect that for these hot months. Other item of note, I was actually corresponding with Chuck Crooks, your auditor today. He will be here the last week of September, first week of October. I think it starts the 29th. I'll finish through that week. So, we should have presentation. I don't think we'll get it done and I don't think he'll be quick enough to get us done for that first meeting in October, but look for that, that second meeting of October for auditor's question.
Questions or comments on the financial reports? Questions or comments? Meredith, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move to item number 10 then, which you're dealing with, there's two agenda items under item 10, dealing with annexation of certain adjacent contiguous territory. Council members, particularly on item 10B is a very long agenda item. What I'm going to do, it's a, it's a long summary. And I will abbreviate it because we can make it very simple, but prior to going to the vote, if you indulge me, I'll read the entire agenda item, which I'm required to do by the charter. So, we'll just fast-track this in the explanation, but I'll read the entire agenda item prior to the vote. Item A, of course, deals with primarily with the petition by On-Q to bring their property into the city limits. This was part of our contractual agreement with them, that they would pose no objection to being annexed with the property that they retained. And then, of course, we would do our part by agreeing to annex the other 128 acres. And so, item A is an opportunity to let you all know that the petition has been received, that the publications have been put into the Perry Daily Journal. It's also an opportunity for you to review the affidavit publication along with the map and to address any public questions that there might be as it relates to the potential annexation of the, what we're referring to as the On-Q property. You've already seen it tonight on an overhead as it related to the ball fields, the property that we're talking about, the roughly 150 acres that were in play with the On-Q purchase. Questions related to that? There's no action to be taken on item 10A, it's just notification? Any questions? Give the public an opportunity to speak?
So, you're saying that we're going to annex their property and our property together?
That's the intent, should you approve the ordinance under item 10B.
How would property be zoned?
Good question, Bryce.
Well, it comes in, well, it comes in residential. However, we have a duty to rezonate your next item, even though it's agricultural. Yep, not on this agenda, but we're gonna, we're going, we have a duty under the contract to, to make it R3, or excuse me, C3, which is general commercial. So, that was part of the contract too. Yeah, I mean, normally annexations provide that when you bring it into the community, it comes in as ag? Our says residential.
Any other questions or comments related to the public portion of this agenda item? Comfortable with moving on to B? Very well then, we'll move on to item 10B, which is to consider approval of the ordinance 2013-22, annexing certain territory located adjacent or continues to the corporate limits. Folks, this, a yes vote on this item would be to approve the annexation of the entire 150 acres, which would include that owned by On-Q and that owned by, currently by the city of Perry. Okay? Be pleased to address any questions that you have related to that. Seen none then, the motion would be in order. Salute.
Second.
Okay, so bear with me, this is a little reading. We have a motion, a second, to consider an ordinance 2013-22, annex certain territory located adjacent or continues to the corporate limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma. Namely, the northwest quarter of section 29, township 21 North, range 1 West of the Indian Meridian, Noble County, state of Oklahoma, acknowledging receipt of a written petition requesting such annexation from at least three-fourths of the registered voters and the owners of at least three-fourths in value of the territory to be annexed. Which petition was presented to the city council of the city of Perry on September 16, 2013 and is attached as exhibit A. Notice of the petition, of the presentation of the petition requesting such annexation was published on August 20, 2013, and August 27, 2013, in the Perry Daily Journal with a copy of such publication attached as exhibit B in your packet. Attaching a map of the annexed territory is exhibit C, providing for authority for such annexation, directing the mayor designee to file a certified copy of the ordinance with attachments with the city clerk of Noble County and with the election board secretary of Noble County and with the head of the law and division of the, of the Oklahoma Tax Commission and to amend the city of Perry's map to show that such annexed property is now within the corporate limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, providing for repeater, savings, severability, and declaring an emergency. A yes vote will approve the ordinance, a no vote will turn it down. Questions or comments? Would you like me to read the...
Do we got to put the FOP on notice?
Yeah.
That they have more residentialous of property to propagate, to control.
Questions or comments? Seen none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Motion on the emergency?
Salute.
We have a motion, a second, on emergency, not available, roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
No.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, we'll move now to item number 11. Item number 11 is yet another agenda, a long agenda item. I will summarize and read it in detail once we get to the vote. This is considering approving an ordinance 2013-23. I'll, I'll, Mary to weigh in on this, but in general, folks, as you're aware, that for years, the airport operated with a board that made recommendations to this body. The, the charter is, is pretty clear that, that boards and commissions all work through the city manager. We have spent time with the airport board discussing them, the need to potentially move them into an ad hoc role where they would continue to meet and make suggestions as warranted to this body, but that Mary would, it would be a department, a complete department of the city of Perry, not be independent by form. We all know that the tie as department head works for Mary and this just kind of shores that up, clarifies that. So, that's the short description of what this does. The library, the library board, the airport board has, has all been spoken to and they're agreeable with the, with the situation. Mary, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing other than all of the current members are glad to stay on and serve on the ad hoc group, so as far as I know. So, I, I met with them a couple times, well, one time.
Twice.
Twice, yeah. I've met with them twice and, you know, put together the language. They had some feedback in regard to the duties, having a little bit more structure on their duties and we've addressed that, so. With that, we're ready to recommend approval.
I make a motion, approve the ordinance.
Thank you, Tim.
My second.
Thank you, Gordon. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. I'll read it, ask for questions. Consider approval of ordinance 2013-23, amended chapter 16 of the Perry Municipal Code of 2012 by providing for certain amendments to article 2, by the provision of a new section 16-201 entitled lease of airport, by the provision of a new section 16-202 entitled airport manager, by the amendment of section 16-203 entitled ad hoc advisory board, by reserving section 16-204, by the deletion of the former section 16-201, 16-202, 16-203, 16-204, 16-207, by the amendment of section 16-205 providing for the ratification by the Perry Municipal Authority, by the amendment of section 16-207 providing for the ratification of Perry Municipal Authority, savings, severability, repeater, complication, declaring, and emergency. Questions or comments?
Take a breath.
Okay, a yes vote approves the ordinance and a no vote turns it down. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion on emergency?
Calling in a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on the emergency, roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. I can never predict what's going to happen.
I can say I'm voting no.
Okay, we'll move to item number 12, consider the appointment of award one councilperson in confirmation by the city council of Ms. Donna Parrish as trustee number four to the Perry Memorial Hospital Authority. Council members, we had an opening for the trustee number four. Donna had, Ms. Parrish has, has shown a willingness and a desire to serve and that is the recommendation of the award for councilperson.
I'm going to make this one in my confirmation. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve. Will there be discussion? Seen none, you're voting, consider the appointment of Donna Parrish to its trustee number four of the Perry Memorial Hospital Authority, roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, item number 13 is to acquire the front end loader. Nice, short explanation. Item A is authorizing the purchase of an '08 front end loader with, from Warren Caterpillar. The cost of this is $101,000, not taking into account a less of $20,000 trade-in for a net purchase price of $81,000. Waive competitive bids by at least two-thirds by the members of the city council and, along with the reasons for the waiver. Mary, I'll let you address this.
Basically, the street department's in need of a, of a front end loader. They've been looking and looking for a piece of equipment that would fit our needs. We believe we have found a piece of equipment. We've actually been able to see it and take a look at it. There are a couple of things that they're going to have to, to fix. The windshield is shattered and, you know, probably a rocket or something, but otherwise it's in really good, pretty good shape. It's a 2008 model and so we're just recommending, it comes with a one-year full warranty. There was some confusion whether it had 2,800 hours or 2,100 hours, but 2,800 hours is, is what it actually has and so that's a little bit different than what was in the explanation. Still at 2,800 hours for 2008 is, is a, is a good deal. They, this is a piece of equipment that could be used for a variety of things, including demo of dilapidated structures, should we get to that point with any of those that we have hearings on. So, we're going to, item A talks about the acquisition, item B talks about authorizing the lease purchase agreement with, through Warren Caterpillar. But we would recommend the authorization to, to purchase this piece of equipment. And in addition to, normally comes with a bucket, but it's got a grappling hook and a set of lifting forks. So, those are kind of extra and above and beyond what you might normally expect to get.
As noted in your council packet, and we should, we should bring it out to, you know, for public knowledge. Meredith, you might want to address the overage as it relates to budget for the purchase of this.
So, we budgeted in, in the fiscal year, budgeted $65,000 and with debt service of $15,000. That was at a 5% interest rate. They're promising less than 2% on this is what's been told to us. That with buying it three months into the year is going to give us about a thousand, maybe $2,000 overage, kind of depending upon where that interest rate ends up. So, that's something that we could absorb in the budget.
So, what we're asking for on item number A is for you all to, I guess, Bryce, you're okay with it being in one motion, that it would... That it would authorize the trade-in, authorize the purchase of the loader, waiving competitive bid, and directing the clerk to incorporate the reasons for the purchase as provided in the agenda.
Who's been to see this loader? Where's it at? Has it been brought here?
Yes.
I saw it this morning. It was actually brought in from Amarillo, but I, you know, test, operated it, test drove it, and everything is sound on it. I took the city mechanic, he looked at it for leaks and any problems that he saw, and right now, the only, only problem mechanically we could find was a loose belt.
So the department head didn't go see it?
No, he was actually out on a doctor's appointment this morning. But he is aware of the options we had, and this is the size that he was wanting.
And I can confirm that, that the department head is having a personal family matter that he had to attend to. It's my understanding-
I would say that. I did have a conversation with Sam about this piece of equipment, and he told me personally, this is the piece of equipment that we need. And he's fully in support of this particular piece of equipment, so. Very appreciative that we would go a little above and beyond what the budget was. Sometimes you try to fit the piece of equipment with the amount that you have budgeted, and you don't always get what you need.
Well, I respect that. I just, I think he would be the most qualified to go see it, is what I'm thinking.
Well, we did have the-
We're buying a piece of equipment that the department head hadn't even seen yet, and that kind of bothers me a little bit.
I understand.
It's my understanding too, that the one that we're replacing that's broke down, that it was a 60-horse, and this is closer to 90, is that right?
Yes.
So this is a bigger, bigger unit, can do, can do a lot more, obviously, for horsepower junkies, I understand that. But Sam is on board with it?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to approve item 13, parts A and B.
Second.
Can we do those in the same motion?
Well, we haven't been, we haven't gone over B yet.
Oh, we haven't?
No, can you, no, we're gonna say part A. Yeah, just, just part A. Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a motion second to authorize the purchase of the 2008 front-end loader from Warren Caterpillar for $101,000 less $20,000 trade, for an '86 Caterpillar front-end loader for a total of $81,000, waiving paid building, and provide a full, complete statement of the reasons for the waiver, amended to the city council. Will there be discussion?
What other dealers did we solicit from?
I think they were in the packet. When you're looking at used equipment, it looks like it's a John Deere. There was a John Deere. I'm not able to read this.
Is it, is it-
It was also Caterpillar, but it was just through a different, different vehicle, it's like.
We solicited CL Boyd, Yellow House, you know, also the Caterpillar dealerships, and we actually had a hard time getting salesmen to even call us back. Most of them don't want to deal with the smaller units. They would rather sell the units that are 130, 150,000, $200,000 units. But the problem is, you know, having a used piece of equipment in the area that we could actually go check out, and the salesman that would call us back was kind of difficult, which is why we went to the internet and provided as many samples as, that were comparable. And so this being the one in the local state, we did go by and look at it. This is the first time we tried for multiple weeks on having salesmen call them back, and we had to go to the manager of this one to kind of light the fire and get him to call us back.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to approve the purchase. And I've read the agenda item, continued discussion, Bill?
Is there, is there some reason we have to do this before Sam looks at it? It's not, I'm really bothered about that. I'm just asking, is there, is there a timeframe that we got a problem with?
Well, if we wait, the chances are it's gonna be gone.
Well, it sounds like Sam's on board with it. You've talked to him about this specific-
Yes, I have.
-machine, right?
Yes. I mean, he has not seen it. Chris and Matt went to see it. Sam was very appreciative that, you know, we would, that he, I mean, he said, this is the kind of, this is the equipment that we need to do what we need to do, so. And I understand what you're saying, you know, making sure.
Can I add, please, add that, you know, my background before I got into municipal government was a heavy, heavy equipment operator for FLenco for several years, and before that, it was smaller pieces of equipment. So, I mean, I grew up around equipment, I know equipment, and I've operated several front-end loaders, smaller and larger. You know, I mean, I'll be an expert, but I do, I have been around it quite a bit.
And we do have a one-year full warranty, which gives, gives you a little bit of comfort. You know, maybe not as much comfort as you'd like, but.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller. Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
No. We have, we, it makes, now, huh? Yes, it passed. Motion, so now we're moved to attend item 10B, which is consider approval of lease purchase agreement with Warren Caterpillar for purchase of 2008 front-end loader. And as Mary has stated, the rate is nice.
Yes.
What would you like to do with it?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve, will there be discussion? Seeing none, we're voting to approve the lease purchase agreement with Warren Caterpillar for the purchase of the '08 front-end loader. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
No.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now we'll move to item number 14, which is consider approval of resolution 2013-07, the City Council of the City of Perry supporting House Bill 1875 establishing a maximum retention fee of the Oklahoma Tax Commission of 1/2% for the collections of the city of Perry's sales taxes in use, and directing the originals of the resolution to be sent to our state senator and our state representative. Council members, this comes out of the Oklahoma Municipal League. It's a bill that ran last year, and once you get the explanation, it'll make perfect sense to you. The Tax Commission is the one that does the collection of the majority of the sales taxes in the state of Oklahoma. When that system was created, they took a charge for that to cover their expenses associated with the staff and the hardware and the software, et cetera, to be able to perform that function. As time has gone on, they've been able to automate a lot of those services. And so the OML actually requested a study of what the actual cost is to do these sales tax collections around the state of Oklahoma. And what they discovered is, is that it's costing about half as much as it did. And of course, as you would expect, the cities in Oklahoma said then charges half as much. You can see in your packet, and actually, that number's been adjusted to some current numbers, but if this bill should pass, it would save the city about, currently about $10,000 annually in what we're charged by the Tax Commission. It, it made it quite a way, quite a ways last year in government, until the Senate figured out that it's about a $10 million expense to the budget. But we really feel like that both the Pro-TM and the Speaker of the House are on board, and they see the value in this. The cities are really helping to subsidize what the Tax Commission is doing, and it's just not our responsibility to do so. So we think that this has got some great momentum. The OML is asking for approval of these resolutions by their member cities, and will turn them into legislature, and hopefully will get a nice savings after the legislature meets in this cycle. That's what that's about. What would you like to do with it?
I think it must be approved.
Second.
I feel good about this. For, for, I feel good about these votes. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to consider approval of the resolution 2013-7 supporting House Bill 1875 establishing a maximum retention fee by the Oklahoma Tax Commission of 1/2%. Will there be continued discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Yes, now we move to item number 15, which is consider additions to the list. Go ahead.
The list. Recently, I emailed out to the council a copy of the list that was prepared a few years back, and also provided an update on the items that was on the list. And so a lot of those have been completed, some were deferred, you know, a variety of, the projects were determined to either, you know, yes, we're wanting, we want to go forward, no, we don't, and so a lot of those have, have gone by the wayside. So what I did, I sat down and thought through of the things that we've talked about here around the horseshoe, also some things that I'm aware of. There might be some projects that are already, already in the works, but yet not actually started, like the sewer project with the CDDG grant. So I would just read down through these, list these off, and if there are any that you have a burning desire to add to the list, I think now's the time, and or you can get with me later. Sewer master plan, and I'm not gonna go into detail on these, so that, because I think most of you are familiar with these, with the CDDG grant sewer project. We have the Country Club Drive, Seventh Street sewer line replacement. It's a one-block-long sewer line that we're working with the property owners. One of the things that came up as a result of that particular project is fences in easements and access for utilities. So I think maybe an item discussing that issue at some point down the future, whether or not we're interested in having fence permits or, you know, having people come in and talk with us first before they put in fences, because they actually block, in this particular instance, up on Country Club Drive, we cannot get a piece of equipment in there. There's a utility electric pole that's in there that's really precarious position.
You have an easement, right?
It's in the easement, but we can't get to it because-
That has, that, that has gates we can drive in, I've seen.
Well, may now.
Well, it may, no, it's because someone built the house on the easement on the thing. It's exactly what it's for.
Right, well, there's fences all the way through there that impede access, so.
Well, all the, all the fences I've seen, because I've got someone, what you call a daughter lives there, and they have gates on all the fences. They can open and trucks can get in there, except for when someone built the house.
Yes, anyway. Moving on, onto the list. So anyway, that's an item for discussion, lots, I'm sure it'll bring up-
Someone on the zoning commission.
Lots of different opinions, so. We do have an item that's carried over, the electric substation, the West Purlou, that precedes me, and I think there's been some discussion with OMPA on that. And so that's probably an item that needs to come to the forefront. Smart meters. I understand that OMPA might be putting together some sort of a group initiative wherein it might be more affordable and more doable for smaller communities to go to smart meters. So that's on the list. I didn't list them all out, but the current year budget projects and equipment purchases would be something that could be listed out and, you know, keep an update on. We also have a project that was funded in this year budget to replace street signs and post street name signs to, we have a lot of faded signs, can't read them, stop signs that are faded, and so the current year budget includes $10,000 to, to do a project. We did an inventory of those last year. And if we run out of the $10,000, we may come back and ask for a little bit more, because it's a project that's sorely needed throughout the community.
Mary? In that regard of signs, could we possibly get with the traffic people at ODOT here in Division 4 and talk to them about routing signs? Because I'll get inquiries from people about where is I-35 from here? All the time. And Mary downstairs at the photographer's she has questions all the time. People just walk in, they come from '86, or they came from a different route, and they don't know which way to go to find I-35. It's kind of funny, we tell them, you can go either way you want to. Still, if there were some routing signs, that would-
That would help, that would be a big help. The, we're, time is drawing near to bring out the re-grant application to NODA for the Perry Commercial Park access road. We were turned out last year, but we believe that we're, we should have a better chance this year, because it is very shovel-ready. We have Vance with their plans, we have the approval from ODOT for the access road. So, so we're gonna hit that pretty hard. We're also in the process of enforcement action on high grass and all of those things, so that's kind of ongoing. There's been some discussion about developing a, an ordinance that would allow and provide for recreational vehicle RV parks within the city limits. So that might be something that this group might want to discuss. It would be obviously something that would have to go, you know, develop the ordinance, go through the planning commission, and that sort of thing eventually come to this group. That's in the works. Trails, Vice Mayor Johnson has mentioned trails. Ms. Warner has mentioned the armory, keeps reminding us about the armory, so those-
I got the blueprints for the armory.
You did?
I went to the Air Force Reserve, and they haven't called me.
That's cool.
Tonight, we talked about sports fields, sports fields existing and new. Splash Path has been something that's been discussed in the past. Ripley Field, I'm gonna be brave on this one. I, I brought up the question, I wasn't exactly sure why the city actually owns that, but it's used exclusively by the school, and so I'd like to have a conversation about that, either with this group, I'd probably start with the school superintendent, but whether or not it's possible to just transfer that property over to the school and let them be responsible for it. But I know there's a lot of history there, and so I know I'm taking a little bit of a step out there, even mention that. We also have, with the Vance dealership, GM dealership gets their property built and all of that, we will eventually have the current Vance building, and so determining what the future use of that property is, whether it would be a, whether we'd sell it, be a city facility, be something, whatever, but this group will need, need to be talking about that a little bit. Then personnel manual update, which is in the works. Job descriptions, which we, are, it's ongoing, and so we're working on those too. Utility deposits. Just looking at the utility deposits to determine if our current system, you know, if there's other ways, better ways, if we charge enough, utility deposit for some accounts, sometimes it doesn't cover the final bill, and we end up having to chase down the balance of it. So just taking a look at utility, utility deposits. Development plan for the Onq property, which was just recently purchased, and also more promotion for economic development. Those, that's the list, it's not all-inclusive, so there's other items that could add to, add that to the list.
Before you were brought on this, Andrew, I think we, we have a group of armory committee.
I think I have a national committee.
Just wanted to remind you.
Lynn and I know.
Lynn and you know. And Betty was chair.
Yeah, we're, we're caressing Betty about meetings.
Won't you spray that green ivy, it's halfway grown.
They wouldn't pull that off, I think during the winter time.
Parks actually do-
Gonna ruin mortar.
Yeah, they did take that down once, but they-
You do have to be careful about, you can't just pull it down.
I got some raps.
Okay, I think the, I think the list does a good job of kind of letting you guys around the table and our citizens know that there are a lot of long-term, bigger issues that are out- issues that are out there that we need to, you know, address from time to time, and have them in the forefront. I think Mary's doing a good job of keeping the list up. If you all have other big things that you'd like to have added to this, it's just, it's our radar. It's our 30,000-foot level of, of things that would be great if we could accomplish, and it's a, like you said, it's a, it's an evolving process. So I think it's good to put it in front of us from time to time. I'm glad you did it tonight. Thank you. Any other questions or comments as it relates to the list?
Weren't they working at one time on the job description? Are we still...
We're still working on the... It's, it's one of those things that as, you know, position becomes open, you work on that one, or you might do a group, say, a department, and you kind of get all of one department updated. It's just a matter of figuring, like, this year with the FLP contract, we've worked on all of the job descriptions in the police departments, so those are all, those are all, you know, have been, have been updated, so.
Additional questions or comments on the list? Seeing none, we move to item number 16, new business. Seeing new business needs to come before Perry City Council. Seeing none, we move to item number 17. We have a motion, second to adjourn, or reach it up. How do you feel about this?
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Foxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Nation.
Yeah.
Wade.
Aye.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, ma'am.